I'm gonna call this meeting over to the school district number one, several example school board meeting. January twenty fifth, eight seven. We're working on all that meeting order. Uh, at a increase of one twenty one percent for the next full year. All those in favor? I need a motion for it. For five seconds. Go ahead, come forward, go to.
Yeah, the open search. Oh, no, I don't want to.
My second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Now I'll make my motion for the two-year contract. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
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 Aye, five ayes motion is approved. Uh, would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. First time is approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of twelve twenty one.
I mean, most weeks up the minutes from December twenty first.
I'll say it. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, five ayes motion is approved and then approval of the special meeting minutes from one twenty one.
I think those three approve those minutes as well.
I'll say again.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, five ayes, uh, motion is approved. Moving on to communications, PTO. There's no PTO counts. Citizens count. If you wanna go, go ahead, go first. No, that's your group, go ahead.
Alright, hi, my name is Melissa Samorki, I've been in the area since two thousand, I'm a local teacher and I'm running for Willamette School Board. So there, I just wanna introduce myself and since my children don't go here and if I wanted to get my name out there. Uh, I have a junior at Willamette, a freshman at Willamette and a fifth grader, all boys. And I think it's important to be vested in the school where your children are going through and make sure everything stays as a healthy, solid education for all the children and the children. And I also feel like it takes a building, I have a very close relationship with the family that every kid's gone by. So that's why I'm here to be friends often saying, I'm a Willamette school. Thank you for your.
Thanks for coming.
Oh, alright.
Go ahead.
Um, so, good evening, uh, along with, uh, my other candidate. Um, there's two open seats and from what I gather, there's two people here right now that are running for Willamette Union High School. Uh, school boards, I'm gonna introduce myself as well. Um, my wife and I and our crew kids have been in the area for two years. Uh, we're already loving the community, um, invested in things like the junior football, uh, junior Panther football program. Um, cheer at the high school or, uh, whatever other activities their kids are constantly chilling to. Um. So, I'm a retired Air Force engineer, was about twenty-two years, five deployments under my belt. I currently work for the Navy as a federal employee and, uh, run the facility maintenance department and in the public works department. Um. Other than that, come on the boat, we're having a primary on February sixteenth. You want more information? Uh, natecolborne.com, that's Colborne, no. Thank you very much, and by the way, congratulations to number eleven to the state, that's a substrafer, so. Thank you.
Do you have something there?
Yeah.
Any other public counts? Point one, point two. Five staff. Check the many ways that counts. Point one, point two. Administration, Andrew.
Um, very thankful to be back in person. It didn't, uh, it was kinda like Christmas morning and they came back. Um, and we had quite a few of our virtual students come in, virtual students, meaning students that have chosen this forum, their time may be virtual. So, we started a year around ninety, virtual students were eighth grade. And as of today, we're at forty-three, which will be down according to next Monday. So, um, I think that just with numbers going down and the safety protocol, and I think that our numbers are doing very well. I mean, we have very few absences as far as students right now. I think that has helped with some of our virtual parents who are low, very, uh, they're very, very, um, yeah. So, in fact, on Monday, we had, uh, today, we had three, three virtual students come back. So, um, we spent a lot of time talking to the parents just about our protocol and what we do, so happy about that. Um, doing a lot of catch-up with some of our students that were virtual, just difficulty with getting work done and things like that. So we are implementing some different ideas just to try and give some extra time here. I have lots of students up by me, um, just during study hall time and recess time and just some others, just to give them some extra help with getting some homework done. Um, we talked with fifth through eighth grade today and they're gonna try to run like something different, they're scheduled just to give more study hall time or it's just more direct time of getting some help, just getting things done. We are halfway through our second trimester, believe it or not, already. Um, starting in the beginning stages of our state testing, so that our D L F, I talked about a little earlier, that's our alternative testing for core exam. We have our core exam, we have access testing, which are for, um, English, language learners. So, the windows don't open up till March, but it's just the time that I have to do a lot of the data load and, um, making sure that that's all correct because that mistake holds that in order for the label to be printed out. So, just a lot of that computer work for right now. Um, the training videos are coming out, so I'll share those with the teachers in the next couple of weeks. Those will be out, just pretty much the same thing every year, but I think they still have to be trained, you know, with our security and how to do the testing. And then after that, there'll be some practice tests that'll come up that they can go over in the last week. So, just starting to know that. We have, um, junior Panther coming up with Willamette, um, we're working with the counselors there. Fortunately, everything's gonna have to be virtual, which, you know, sad, I think that junior Panther, they were like really being old and really be in the heart of Willamette is so beneficial. So, that's a little upsetting, but we're gonna virtually meet with all the eighth graders, uh, we're coming up with questions right now, so that they can answer some questions, just names to faces. Uh, we'll have some of the Willamette staff come online with it. That's, I'm gonna have that too. That's all that. Um, PTO, I know they're not here, uh, they talked to us about possibly looking into maybe some virtual assemblies. We hadn't really been able to do, obviously, any assemblies, but there is a lot out there that companies are coming up with, with different virtual assemblies. So they had asked if we were okay with that for them to start looking into that. So, I'll keep you updated when, when we go with that. Um, we have tried to still continue with protocol, but we've opened up the library before, we did, we're coming to library, which are coming to them. So we started a schedule where, again, just cohorts are going to library at a certain time and we have space in between that you can get things like down, except the clean, they're happy before they go in. And then after, I think that that's going really well, kids are excited about getting in, holding books and, you know, going in and actually getting to work at them. Same thing with band, we are, uh, trying to work with what would band look like if you kind of keep with those cohorts. So, Valerie's been working on that too, because of the facilities, we just need individual lessons. So just trying to put work together and kind of fade back some of the things that we had, like, but still following our protocol. That's it.
Got it.
Yeah, couple of, uh, next month, we've been talking about budgeting and the whole budget, you know, state budgeting process. So, St. Louis County does budgeting on a perimeter cycle, so it's the twenty-one, twenty-three cycle that's coming up. Uh, it's likely gonna be a long process as they work through that. CBI is gonna look like it's in there on one point three percent. It's, uh, we'll find out here at the end of, at the beginning of February, you know, come on, and hopefully we'll hit that by last, but that seems that percentage have been going down for all the years. So, we'll forget if it is whether or not it's one point three percent. Then our CARES budgeting, the CARES June, we're looking at about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we're gonna have coming from that. We need to spend that by the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three, um, budget cycle. So, some, for the next two years, that money is gonna be available for use. Um, talked with the area district administrators last Thursday about some of their costs were in terms of utilizing that money. And as we move towards returning to school, getting everybody back, um, and with the last year being so identically destroyed. Um, districts are looking at doing things with their interventions, so having a thing like that, R T I programs for this past year. We're looking at, um, uh, one of the common ideas that was brought up is to take a look at that before the reading and math interventionists, to work with their student source program. That in particular, at both the national level and locally. Reading sports have kind of, they're, they're older, they're, it's been a math or, or just ran with moral struggle. Um, so, so that'll be something we'll be able to talk about. We haven't had a chance to read that into that this part, but we'll be looking at that. Um, we won't be doing virtual, like, and having the virtual teachers, so, so there's gonna be, you know, if we pull that back. Um, then the opportunity to perhaps, um, take a look at how we could best, anyway, we're gonna take a look and see where we can save some budget money, but also, um, see how we can repurpose what we, we go for with that. Uh, we're all excited, and, and we finally got a storm coming in there. So, um, we've been kind of monitoring the weather, it didn't look like it was gonna be all that hot, should I turn this morning? And about two o'clock today, we got a lot of, a lot of rainstorm warning. But Andrew and I had talked about, we've got the capability to, to do a, a, a virtual learning day out of there like that. But in this case, we're not taking the decision until four thirty or five o'clock in the morning, we need to pack up the kids, you have to bring all your stuff home. And then that, whether or not we're gonna have a virtual learning day or if we're gonna bring all that home or not. So for this one, it was our plan to, to not try and force a virtual learning day. If you, if you had more kind of plan on it and, uh, uh, who? Uh, kind of work with their teachers and they kind of prep our kids for the day. Um, felt like they're making something that will line up, something like that, definitely, but it's comfortable, we're making the decision at four thirty or four in the morning. So, uh, we'll see kinda how that goes, there's some new folks at Dalsk that we're working with and, uh, and motivating decisions in the.
Yeah, thanks, guys. Four counts.
So, I had, uh, a question, um, just obviously thank you for everything you did to have a kid back, right? Um, based on your update, those sound like we increased by forty-eight students back in the building versus virtual. Um, how are we doing with our two virtual teachers? Cause I know it was struggling at times with subs in the building. Right, thought, and we continue to see that number shrinking, bringing back some of those virtual teachers from the building. How are our classroom sizes holding up? I know you guys kind of break it out, you know, keeping the core classes and keeping them really separate and right, but as you continue to bring other class levels that are starting to get to where we might have space issues with them because of size, with kids on the back?
Um, well, the virtual is virtual, nothing all can us, obviously, on the term of the age. So, um, right now, the classroom teachers, we're gonna talk a lot about that in the last time, the classroom teachers are actually meeting with the virtual students. Um, and then our younger grade, we still have Shelley on, who's working with them. We had talked about that, and we're starting to see those numbers go down, that there's gonna maybe have to be a conversation of, you know, where we do it at the younger grades. Um, class size, I, I feel a little worried about that. Um, seventh grade is, I mean, we have a very large seventh grade, and if everyone comes back, we're looking at in-house class sizes of about twenty-eight. So right now, we're right around the twenty. Um, I've had, when kids come back, like, I noticed a lot are coming back in one person's homeroom, like, especially the eighth grade, I did this because this gentleman, all the virtual kids came back. And Stacy had a really large room, so I just moved some of those kids into Stacy's room, cause I have more speakers. So I have moved kids around when I come back as far as homeroom, just to try to keep the map at a large. Our first grade is another, um, we just had two first grade, and so both are ready, you know, right around twenty-two, twenty-three that everybody came back. Um, other than those two grades, sixth grade is right around seventeen, eighteen. Um, but just trying to move kids around so that I am aware of that, probably seventh grade. We, we knew what anybody was gonna be learning, we gained, hmm, well, two, seven three years, for sure. Um, and then we had a couple other who studied greater earlier in the year. So, it started out large and it's, we did four, we seven three years. Is it anyone seven three years to come in or either being promoted or demoted?
Well, I appreciate the answer, I appreciate all the guys. I, I think our biggest classroom is twenty-two. I, I think our seventh is twenty-two.
Thank you. Any other board counts?
Yeah, I don't know, it's, um, last month when we, um, we made a motion to, uh, to the special ed, um, like, not any, I'm gonna use the wrong word, but the, the one that we, that we, you know, we approved to have come out. Um, it just, I stepped away, didn't, didn't, you know, actually sleep on it a little bit, because they go, I guess I'm not really understanding why all this stuff, we had such a, like, problem with that. Like, and there's nothing, it was because of, I know it's been more than one, but it was not because of COVID. It, I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand why it initialized in the summer. Why the need for one, another person to show up in the summer, just so that would help learn smarter states. That may come up in our conversation later when we, um, decide whether we put pass on the enrollment. So that's my question, my claim to be answered, but I just walked away and I just couldn't stop thinking about that.
Yeah, I can answer it now, just for the time being, um. We had, we had woven special ed students, so that we really didn't, we didn't know during the summer that our numbers were gonna be larger. The other problem is, we had pushed back referrals. So, students that may have possibly referred last year, heard of referral process, and you have to do platform operations and intervention. And so we couldn't do that last year in March, so we have, we have a lot of referrals this year for special ed. Um, and so we're seeing, especially with speech too, like, those are blowing up because we really weren't able to do what we could have done last year in March, this March. And you can't really base your numbers on, hmm, I think they, they might make it, they might not qualify. So, I think that's a large problem right now, is now that how we're doing their testing, is they're qualifying, our numbers are getting larger.
Yeah, in the summer, you definitely couldn't do those referrals. So I just was, I don't know, it just kinda seemed like it snuck up on us, and they're just kind of in life. Proceed with it, I believe.
Yep. Yes, that's a question, I don't get it. In regards to like COVID, I know with, like, I think asking for a locally, if they are behind, how do you feel? Like, we feel like your teachers this year have to focus on getting students caught up for the spring, and so we're really not on track? Or how do you feel like we're moving, that's still trying to, if kids ready to be caught up? Yeah, I'll be about it. I think, well, I mean, we talked a lot about that at the beginning of this year in August. I said, you, you know, you really need to keep in mind, like, if you're opening a book and you start usually on chapter one, you might have to spend a little bit more time with the review. But we're still trying to, like, work that in, I mean, we obviously get kids that are farther behind, and I just had this discussion today, and it looks a little bit different when you're, you are in first grade. And I think if you don't build that foundation and you're just trying to get through a book, we are really hurting that child forever. Because if you're a first grader and you have to learn to read, but then in second grade, you're ready to learn. So if you don't learn to read and then you go to second grade, you're kind of, so it's kind of a gamut, but then when you're a seventh or eighth grader, you're like, you need to make sure that you are being exposed to those skills, you need to go on to high school. So, I do think we're doing a little bit of each, and we knew that you were gonna be behind from being out very large. Um, our first, probably one of those people was just a lot of, like, catch-up and, and talk about, hey, what were the main? Our teachers actually got together at the end of the year and in August to go over, here's what I did, I'm a sixth grade teacher, here's what I did, you, you're right, maybe you should start this seventh grader, or a seventh grade teacher. So we did some of that too, just to, to bring those skills up, but still trying to make sure that there's that exposure. We know there's gonna be, you know, that lagging, a little bit of gaps, and so just trying to do a make sure, hope. Um, that's when we talked about with RTI this year, you know, not gaining that service this year is where everybody is gonna see. Because especially at our school, like, we have really seen our test work go off because our RTI kids are, like, holding with gaps. So we know next year, like, it's really important to us that we do something, like, right, whether it's, you know, more than one RTI teachers, or, right, we can get those intensive interventions right away. Um, so, a little bit of, I don't think.
Yeah, okay, sure.
Okay, we have board counts.
Yeah, the other thing I was gonna make sure was, is I thought about, and so I'm hoping they're back in person, this is, this is your virtual, I don't know what you thought, it happened. Didn't carry the same weight as in person, it was very difficult to be engaged, I guess I would say, as a, as a.
I, I agree, and, and some of the best conversations are the, you're sitting next to somebody in a session and they're from Whistler, and, and you get talking about what's happening there and what you're doing in your own district. Yeah, well, it's just quick, I think it was from the people that were presenting, and I think it was, it was really hard to stay super focused, to be, you didn't get a universal conversation going on.
I would say I was extremely disappointed after being excited about the virtual. Yeah, the board gonna be back in person, Mr..
Thanks for, uh, thank. Hey, moving on to approval of the financial reports. Sure.
There's one more question.
I didn't have, no. Perfectly clear.
Okay, I just kind of, it's not directly near about, about religion, but we kind of brought up the whole, the boiler, you know, that we had, I was like, I know that was, we were gonna get a term penalty for that.
Yeah.
Um, so, I guess it's, I was kind of expecting to see a statement and then, you know, and we have to get rehearsed, but I didn't see one.
Yeah, they actually gave us the money first, which I had never seen before, they actually sent us a check for twenty-six thousand dollars. Went to the hole, um, they, uh, and they actually finished the work today.
Awesome.
So we are back in business and.
Yeah, I was expecting to see a large check go off, and I'm like, wait, what? So, okay, I mean, thank you.
Is that what they gave you, twenty-six thousand? Twenty-eight, five. So we, we picked up twenty-five hundred from what they got from the hole, okay, and, uh, um, so, yeah, what, really? We did everything real cold, and all, um, Rancheck was a bit, were really worried about it, we got a couple of days of, most of the water. Um, but we, we walked away and frankly, some of the days now.
Alright, well, if, no, um, no one's coming to the question, I, um, who said we approved the, um, financial report as presented?
All seconded. They've seconded, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, five ayes motion is approved, moving on to old business, eight point one, COVID nineteen update.
Uh, few things, if, if the focus is really, uh, really going towards and going into vaccinations at this point. Um, from the last meeting, you had asked about P P costs, and heavily went to hope that those things were related to hand sanitizer, gloves, masks. Um, those things that, that she in particular would be ordering, so photo box were about two thousand one hundred and forty dollars. Um, and she actually pitched up a grant along the way, it's just, so she's got the twenty-five hundred dollar grant, so. Then the big cost going forward is gonna be hand sanitizer, we just won't do a lot of it. Um, we did also, uh, we picked up two spraying machines, a foggy machine, and photo box for those, for the three of us, about eighteen hundred dollars. Both of that are, are major costs that we've, we've run into them for mitigation types of, of things that we were, uh, that we were paying for. Um. Vaccinations have, we, we've got a couple things with the county health director to talk about next time. And so currently, Wisconsin officially is in one A. Um, but the, the directives and the, and the guidelines are, are not real clear, so there are counties like Black County, where Jamesville, Jamesville, Evansville, Rodhead, Evansville and Edmonton, Rodhead, their entire staffs receive their first pills. Um, Waller County, let's say from a very different standpoint, and if you are an employee on Waller County, if you're a teacher that says, like, you know, but you live in Penosha County. Uh, the way that they're handling it is that, like, to be the teacher, you need to go and get, uh, get, get their dose in Penosha County, their county, they're correct. Penosha County has, has taken a little different spin as well, so they take it one A, and then as a part of one A, they include therapist, so, P P's. Um, anybody who fit into like therapist mode, um, they will allow you, whether or not you were in a private setting, medical setting, or a school setting, to be able to get your first, first dose. We do have a few people in the building who have the opportunity to get their first doses. Um, they also, because of the potential for contact with bodily fluids, they offer the same thing for food service and for persoon. Uh, it is not mandated, um, because it's in, in the emergency organization, uh, you wouldn't be allowed to mandate it in Michigan, uh, but the opportunity is there. And the county interns are of the school, the kid welding workers, were probably two or three weeks down the line. And we need to have a couple of school districts, uh, so we would realize one of the high schools, one unlikely, and then do something like on Wednesday, and then on Saturday, then people will be able to, you know, like, and have their doses on hold. The, the health department's a little bit weary because they actually, they order their doses a week in advance, and they actually won't find how many they actually get until the Sunday night. So, Monday is, would work really well for us, the, the early release, and you don't have more chemicals. Uh, if, but it doesn't work for the health department to be able to provide vaccinators because, um, they don't know until Sunday night what their actual dosage numbers. So, that's, you know, there's a, there's a lot of, um, lot going on with vaccination piece, and, uh, there'll be, uh, continual conversations, but it's going forward with that. Um, in the coming weeks. Uh, we're seeing some, some good numbers in terms of infections going down. For the first time, we're actually below that critical threshold number, which is fantastic, so hopefully we can stay there. And, uh, I continue to have a, a downward number. Um, in the building, Matt, I like, you had a pretty good run here with last two man for weeks, so hopefully we can continue with that. And, um, again, just continue focusing on the, the basics with the N Washington, hand sanitizing, uh, social distancing, when they can, mask. And, um, we'll just be plugging away as, as we go forward.
If anyone else, any of the teachers in, in County here? Thoughts that you know of?
Thoughts that you know of? In the West Coast, they did allow if you were a behavior therapist and they utilized that as a broad definition. And can you call teachers? Can you call teachers, but, uh, special education teachers would be considered behavior therapists. But they don't be eligible for it in Penosha County. If it's for senior or Walworth County, then they are, they not allowed.
So no one in, none of the teachers in the classroom?
Right, regular education, special teachers have not, no more than this.
No more in Penosha.
Which is all because he, um, is already moving to Walgreens. So seniors just are getting, and I believe it's coming one day.
My parents are, my parents are, they're, uh, they're going to answer, um, my...
Uh, but yeah, it, it is now, like, one of the, the concerns from, it's not a concern, right, of one of the um, cautions that the county health department is, has been trying to focus on is, uh, beginning today, sixty-five-year-old will be ineligible for vaccination. So there are seventy thousand people who are, who are sixty-five or older that are in Penosha County at this point. It's not really starting to happen. Yes, so in it, in it, you know, so like, maybe...
What's lying behind us or?
Looks like at this point, they're in line of progress. Um, we will, I have a, uh, with the School District Administration Association, we've got a Zoom call on when the governor Levers is going to be on it. I'm wondering if he's going to share some information with us in terms of when all educators would be eligible and eligible to participate in one, yeah, um, fielding of life.
Your discussion sounds like it's up to the board.
It's very much a guideline and not a rule. And, uh, there's quite a frustration where Howard Jamesville has that process for the entire school district.
I'm sorry, means you know.
And that was, that was a weak point. Yeah, and how did, how did that happen? Um, and I'm not quite sure how that did it. So maybe, yeah, there's a lot of, it's very much falling to the county health directors, they're kind of, um, kind of running the wheels.
Or does any questions for Doc?
Appreciate you.
Text is updated, Doc. Moving on to eight point two, possible approval of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school calendar.
So didn't realize that last week, we went on a next year, we finalized their calendar, um, a few days before our last four years.
It was literally the Friday.
So, but yeah, it, it was, um, it was when they finalized theirs, there was a chance to make sure that we matched up spring break, to match up Christmas. Um, we, uh, we had that day and, and October, like, was about time was it became fall break, the one day near the end of our COVID. Um, was, I spent with that toward twenty-second, I still moved until the twenty-ninth, so we knew that they got COVID coming on for us. Uh, so we matched up there. A high school always takes Easter Monday. We have never taken Easter Monday, but that's, and they'll always use it as a potential makeup day if they need to, if they have, you know, snow days or, or they come out online. Um, we've been looking at June eight as our last day of school and that would be a hundred eighty-sixth of Easter. Uh, as we go through it. We essentially took our original calendar from this year and applied the whole thing. Uh, including, we removed, uh, parent teacher comments to Thanksgiving week and left the, the conferences during that Thanksgiving week. And there's a new one that, because of, was it, yeah, your first trimester?
No, it's right at the end, actually, before we went in, we would have it in October. Um, and we had math testing at the end of the year and it was like, you technically probably had, like, a good four shooting. So gee, I just felt like it was too early to really discuss much with parents, so I liked it being that at the trimester, I feel like there was better conversation and better damage to share or how well, um, just because there was just more of use of T G in there. But it's right before the end. This year was the same day, but right before the end of trimester one, um, I think we have.
Any questions on the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school calendar?
We typically approve it in January or February. Um, we don't have to approve it at this meeting, um, put a less possible approval under the line. Um, not sure if there's anything that could change, but, um, just wanted to mention.
You can always amend it to each its...
Sure.
I think mostly we accept the proposed calendar for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
I'll second.
Okay, my question's heard, heard, sorry. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five ayes motion is approved. Um, item eight point three, substitute staff.
So just kind of an update, um, we had one permanent substitute that's been working with us, Jerry Holman. He's been at the National Down Forest and she's been really, really busy. Um, we had, uh, we, there's, there's not a pool out there that should be working from building to building, so people are very much building specific. Uh, one of our student teachers, Gabrielle Wiener, has just finished out. She's interested in, in, uh, substituting with us, doing a great job of substituting with us. Um, and, and, uh, would be somebody that would be potentially available for us as we move forward. If there is a lot of that.
Um, I like that we have, like, for instance, Jerry, I know the total of other buildings. Um, and I think, obviously, I've used him every single day since we started and a lot of the times we're filling in other places. I think even though we feel like maybe the COVID relief, like, days are going down, I still have, you know, the doctor applying days, uh, you know, all that twelve thirty last night that I got, I'm going to be sick today. Um, so I feel like if we could have two permanent, I would, I would use every kind of day that I can use them because really we're, we're still covering lunch duties and recess duty, so I always have, oh, I love it, you know, there's always something for them to do. And again, I just like the fact that I'm not trying to, first of all, not trying to find somebody to come in who could have just, uh, all last week if I did their building, I think that opens us up to some problems, difficulties, um.
There's nothing wrong with finding a place to eat once.
Oh, please.
And then the fact that if you're, we have another minor degree.
Yeah, yeah. And that's what I understand, it doesn't feel like I'm always on the, oh my gosh, what if, but I feel that way and, um, even there was one day last week, whether or not I couldn't use both of them. And so Kayla actually was going around and doing flashcards over younger kids who are struggling. You know, like we talked about, like, we, we need to help these kids that, you know, are falling farther behind and just having that, that ability for some of those kids to get that extra one-on-one at big breaks, so. And she's, she's really, and it's nice because she's a teacher. So she has those skills, she has the, where I'm not just pouring someone who's never talked before.
Any question?
No. So one of the things that we'd like to do, if we only utilized Kayla for at least a extended amount of time, if we could have her have a daily basis to spray break, um, that might be a real benefit to us. Um, as we go forward, uh, in, quite frankly, we'd use it for the other year. Uh, but, but having a, a second person, uh, hardly did it, but why not, who wouldn't be the second person?
I would support the spring break piece for that, we visited, um, only because we, as you talked about there, it'd be up there, very potential for other staff members, plus the less rich school, we might be in a different situation back in spring break, so. Um, I guess I would make a motion that we approve the additional substitute through spring break with the idea that we'll revisit that.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five ayes motion is approved. Thank you. Moving on to new business, nine point one, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two open enrollment available spaces.
A future in January, school districts need to set their enrollment available spaces. Those available spaces can be unlimited or they can be capped. And we need to set that in January before the regular open enrollment period. You can then revise that after the third Friday conference in September. In our current situation, just looking long-term, so we're gradually just coming here, uh, a class of thirty-five students. Our next two classes are our two biggest classes, so we've got seventy-one that are in our seventh grade currently and fifty-nine that are in our, our sixth grade. Um, I, I don't want to, and we've got flexibility within our staff, we've got grade levels with two, grade levels with three. So from a regular open enrollment standpoint, um, well, we've got a couple of grade levels that, that with two sections are, are a little bit high. We could still, we have some flexibility to turn one of those twos into a three, depending on what happens with, like, those, with those open enrollment. So we can bring in, I'm average during the regular open enrollment period. All our about twenty students that have been signing up for open enrollment again. We actually were adjusting them to alternate open enrollment that turns over the course of the summer. Uh, so my recommendation would be not to cap regular open enrollment. With special education open enrollment, if, we look at it from a couple of different angles, from a flexibility standpoint, we've got, we've got a lot of mobility and, and part of what's needed come for us over the course of the summer and I have that some movements that we didn't anticipate and ultimately raise some of our, our case load. Uh, for our movements, those are, those are our students throughout our lives and we're going to service those students. Open enrollment, we've only had, we had it wide open, we've only had a couple of students that have come in at the enrollment, that have been special education students. But if we kept it, and we kept our speech and language and if we kept our physical for their current special ed, two, one, where we're at, yesterday, zero, it would give us at least, um, we'd have more control over what those kids will look like. We've talked about, they can look back, special education and the possibility of hiring a new person. If something were to change dramatically, um, and we, we've gone from eleven percent special ed to pushing sixteen percent special ed in terms of our whole number. So that's a, that's a pretty dramatic increase, which is, which referred for, I don't know, a variety of reasons that that's happened. But as we look at, at flexibility within our staff, it would allow us to make that choice if we decided to have a teacher in March or April. Um, we wouldn't have that unknown of special education students coming in through open enrollment that could potentially raise our, our, our physical. Andrew, do you want to add to that?
Oh, I think, I think for regular, I don't, I don't know why you'd ever cap it much, you know, you know, go on higher down the teacher, but I just think there's good practice, there are more people that come in. Um, it's just difficult when you're looking at programming, when you talk about specialized students, um, so. And that would really be a reason, I would have wanted to, like, one special ed teacher, so, so programming to raise families, what?
Yeah, there's obviously specialized, you need one special ed teacher to five, six students or a one-to-one ratio depending on the need of the student.
Correct. And, yeah, and again, we have that seen a large increase of, of special education students come into open enrollment. Um, but it would give us, would give us some control over that. And we can always come back later on in September and potentially open that up if we have added additional features um, to make that perhaps bill.
Can you just reflect on, I mean, do you have, can you raise your profile towards it, pull your breath?
Yeah.
Over here, we live with it.
Or something similar. I just don't know, because of, you know, higher numbers.
Do you have a question? I'll make a motion that we have no cap on regular open enrollment and that we do cap our special education open enrollment for the upcoming year.
I'll second.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five ayes motion is approved. Um, moving on to nine point two, approval of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two sixty-six oh three oh one shared services agreement with Genoa City, joint two for the pupil services branch.
So we have been, uh, a year ago, we entered into an agreement with Genoa City, um, to, uh, share pupil services director. We would look to continue that arrangement with them, uh, for another two years. Uh, it's been a good sharing arrangement. Um, we're able to, um, utilize Julia Victor teams. Um, and at the same time, we're also able to, um, have some information sharing through the rest of Genoa City, which I think, um, provides an opportunity for us to grow with some of the things that everyone can vice versa. Um, so we could look at this point to continue that arrangement. We do have flexibility and at some point, we want to get out of the situation. Um, the opportunity would potentially be there for either of the districts by January first, at that point. Um, or if there was a change of personnel, so in other words, if the pupil services director were to leave or if it's of the district administration were to leave, it allows a window for us to get out of the, I mean, if we so want.
Okay, can we have a summary of this all here?
We have a summary.
Any question?
The only question I have to really be answered, if I could share a personal issue with the primary. Has that been directed or is that?
Well, that was staying at one of the...
That was our original, yeah.
Yeah, it's a good question. I mean, obviously, this is a new sixty-six oh three oh one agreement, doesn't have to be revised or have to be, like, be full signed something?
Before you sign it, so we can approve about that. Make sure the documentation is correct before you sign.
And then I, I had a question, like, but then I also, I was trying to understand the date of this because, um, I got, you know, I got made forty, um, there's number seven and number nine, I'm kind of confusing. Because number seven, um, I understand it to be for one year from, like, January first to following four years, I, I'm concerned about that. But then number nine is for two years, so I guess I...
So, so what, yeah, when we, when we ever did it, then we should, we should clarify. So it was a two-year agreement that we had entered into with Randall, Genoa City and Root. Um, we opted to, um, get out of the agreement with Randall.
Oh, that was with our previous, okay.
And they were totally...
And so in the past, we've run it as a two-year, as a two-year agreement to run coinciding with the contract of pupil services. probably the correct way to do it would be two years from this, from July one of twenty twenty-one.
I think for destiny, but, yeah. I would go to Root. Like, that's kind of how we do our administrative, like, thing we're talking about, and talking about with you guys, that's what I'm going to, like, you know, we talked about at the beginning, where it's, and what it's for, you know, like, July.
It's for the next, this week.
So I would just be more comfortable if that's who you're doing this day, uh, this is the director.
So we look into two years from July one of twenty twenty-one.
In the next, this week.
If, if we just change those on the pupil paperwork, you know, for the signs, I may want to sort of, yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to key and find the wording to be always put our company name. I hope that we improved that share pupil services director agreement and then watch the date before the twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, twenty-four year.
I'll second.
Dave second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five ayes motion is approved. Moving on to nine point three, uh, second Friday, twenty twenty-one enrollment update.
So, uh, January two was our second Friday, we had two counts. So, uh, January two was our second Friday, we're two counties, the third Friday, which is in September. We have the second Friday of January, which is our second calendar of the course of the year. So we're at four hundred and sixty four students. As we look forward, um, I, I just a couple of interesting numbers in that group. If you take a look at our resident four K, so not going open enrollment, our resident four K, we currently have twenty, which is by far the smallest number we've got on our head. And and we're, I thought of this is that many families decided and opted not to set their four K enrollment during the course of of all the activity of this past year. So we've often seen an influx between four K and five K and sometimes ten students or so. And we certainly would anticipate seeing something like that for twenty one, twenty two. For us, graduating are essentially our smallest size percentage of four K plus. We're getting, uh, your small, inner device of thirty five students. So what we'll likely see is CR enrollment next year bump up one. I would at this point would be up to four seventy, maybe four seventy five, something in that range. But then the next two years are our two biggest classes. So so those will be a couple of years that we'll just have to really monitor closely. Uh, because we could very easily drop into the four thirty, four forty range. Uh, with with crazy, with crazy cycles and and so like, you know, we do have classes of thirty five extra classes. And instead of done that and going back historically, we've done that for a long, long time. I'm not sure why, uh, many places are two sections or three sections right across the board. Um, but it will be something that we'll just want to watch. Uh, it's going to impact our budget, it's going to impact spending and, uh, uh, we're going to have to to hit most of the ramifications of those, uh, with those back to back.
Any questions? All right, thanks for that update. Then moving on to nine point four, staff presentation.
Uh, Megan Palukas who committed outstanding special education aid for us over the past three years on the week. Uh, is reading, she's going back to school, she's also up in another position, which is in the field that she's looking to go and split. Uh, and she has has resigned her position here. Uh, we are mostly now looking for, um, interested applicants and candidates and we look to use them here over the next several days. Uh, and, uh, at this point, we would accept Megan's resignation this time and wish her the best.
Any questions? I make a motion, we accept the resignation of Megan Palukas as the manager.
I'll say.
My second. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five ayes, motion is approved. Uh, nine point five, virtual charter school committee update.
So with the, um, virtual charter school committee, putting it together, the chance for me and, uh, the chance that you have some questions of a couple of consultants from D P I, talking about the program and how it's structured, uh, with some of the pieces are of a virtual charter school. As a part of that initial meeting, there were a representative from Brighton, uh, Lakewood, Tupperwell, Black and ourselves as a part of that. Uh, and then our committee had a chance to get together, we talked a bit about it, we decided to survey our families to kind of gauge their interest. A virtual charter is kind of a school within a school. Uh, in Wisconsin, if you're going to have a schooling situation where it is entirely virtual, um, the the, um, approved way in Wisconsin to do that is to do it through a virtual charter. D P I has allowed a lot of leeway and flexibility over the course of this past year. And yeah, uh, if districts work through mobile and, you know, the litigation that we're looking to do. Um, as as we look forward with that, uh, D P I will allow you to do hybrids and you can adopt a hybrid scenario where people would be in person or virtual. Um, and and redefine how many times that is, whether it's once a week that students would come to school, once a month or whatever, uh, you would define that. Um, but it's, it's not so formal of Louie Lander in terms of of moving that, um, in terms of 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 how virtual instruction really particularly works in this game. So as we look forward, I mean, with with kind of our VAs from the county, um, they asked how many were interested in potentially going forward with a virtual charter. And there's just growing reticence that that districts don't want to commit to it. So they they want to have a virtual option in some way, shape or form, but, um, of the districts that that we spoke with, um, none of them were, were excited about jumping into a virtual charter at this point, which was kind of disappointing because, um, I think collectively, there's a lot of value with it. Um, Del Point School District has a program, like Gini has a program, and I mean, this is natural for our K D Hs and median high schools to have a virtual option, a virtual charter option here. Um, but at at this point, there's, there aren't, there's, none of those districts are willing to commit. If a district decided on, if only we were going to have a horrible virtual charter, then they would grant on a charter leader. Um, but it does put you in to be the authorized or pushing kind of a tough side. Uh, because it would mean, uh, committing to the program, you'd have to take a look at staffing. Uh, so why don't we just bring this to a board, there's a discussion in terms of thoughts in terms of moving forward. Um, I think it's an idea that that we should, you know, that we should keep alive. Um, but if we're solo, I don't know if we can do it. Um, thoughts on that, Danielle, what do you thought to do that?
I totally agree. Um, the district, their districts have been willing to partner. Um, sounds like Tupper is probably going to go off on their own. Uh, I just want like the best for our students. And I think that, um, we need to offer something. We did a, fun, did you mention, you didn't mention the survey at all.
Yeah, I I didn't, um, so we ended up surveying our families. We did have ten families that were interested in working for one condition. Uh, there were, for most of, there were, there were families that have been a part of our virtual program. Um, and and, um, we certainly wanted to work with those families to provide some options that, uh, you know, we can lead them all, our kids, including our, our kids that are interested in their virtual piece. Um, again, you know, there are, there are ways that we could do it in the short term for the twenty one, twenty two school year, where we could create our own hybrid model, where they would end up being on site for some of the days. That would be an option for us. Um, but, um, uh, I I do think that it is an idea though that fit for the well art theaters or the social theaters, and I think there's value.
I agree. The the big thing that came out of this, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you mentioned that it's a school within a school, but actually it it virtually exists on its own.
Yes.
It can't like use John as the administrator. There has to be somebody appointed as like the director of the, um, of the charter school. Along with that, you can't have teachers that teach in both.
Correct.
I think so. I I won't really teach in both. I think you have to be assigned to the well. So you have to be willing to say, we're gonna, we're gonna hire somebody and commit them to this position. Now, it's funding available. But the grant process is quite arguable from what was explained very well. I mean, you know, if we could get through it, we could hire a grant writer or, you know, work closely to give the, uh, a grant. We could basically hopefully get ourselves a decision, at least initially. And it would be a hope that, I agree with you that it could keep it alive. Would be nice to have, once it's there, I think other school districts would be very willing to look at what they could do to going after. But instead upfront, a lot of work needs to be done.
Yeah, there's a lot because we did all our work.
Yeah, but as John mentioned, now we, you know, we're basically controlling on it. But definitely, you know, a lot of these cases, that comes out of the, the huge impact.
Well, wasn't one of the things to talk from the beginning was not just the advantage of those who wanted to go virtual, but it was also the fear of losing students to other school districts because they have virtual programs. And what you learned through your committee then is that nobody else has been to virtual, with a virtual charter school at this time. Uh, so I I agree, I think we should keep it open, I think it's a great idea, but I don't see how we could run it without having at least one or two of the schools participating in the house for free costs.
But we don't know how parents are going to look at this, you know, six months of the future here in the future that, wow, I really like that virtual, I think we're gonna, you know, settle this group. And then the kids, no matter how many there are that they own the school, they might, once they know that there's a school locally, it's actually, well, I mean, that's just contextual. You know, that possible.
I don't know what they said, obviously, it's very informational and certain. Continue to keep the idea alive, you know.
Like, if you can live life, should we make a plan that's in on, or I don't know. So, you know, yeah, I would say you want to keep it alive, but then it's unfortunately also tracks to like, do we want to make some sort of thing like set down in three months or like, I don't know, so that would think are fairly comparable?
I I think, I think can be a, um, let's, let's put on our April agenda and we'll talk about it for, because if there's going to be a, a grant writing process in front of us, it would work the best we can for the course of the summer. We can then revisit the other districts and say, hey, let's take a look at twenty twenty three. You know, with, do you have any flying staff that would be interested in, in being a part of the grant writing process? Um, and maybe we can get that over.
I would appreciate it. Just set on, put it on your calendar, talk to them, yeah, so we don't have to talk to them.
I just put a deadline for authorization, so we'll go forward for anything this year. We we would have to make the decision by the end of February. There's a form that you have to fill out the auditorizer for the fall. So if that passes, I just want you to be aware that we were, we're kind of closing the virtual charter door for, um, twenty one.
Correct. We we would not be, we would not be pursuing the charter for twenty twenty two, we'd be working on it for twenty twenty three.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Okay. I thank you for that update. Uh, nine point six, school sponsored before and after school activities.
So as as we move forward, we take maybe steps towards getting closer and closer to some some normalcy. One of the things that we want to do is certainly be able to offer some things for our students before school and after school. Uh, it's going to take us a little while, I mean, we've never done this before, I haven't done this format before. But we want to be able to provide some opportunities for our kids to do some things, uh, that they enjoy doing. Um, and initially start off by really within the whole, which which is challenging to figure out right from a scheduling standpoint. Uh, but we we surveyed our parents, we surveyed our, our fifth through eighth graders. And, um, there's, there's a lot of interest in a wide variety of activities. Um, a lot of interest in the basketball, a lot of interest in that. Um, one of the things that's kind of come out of the whole, um, COVID experiences is racket sports have become, uh, the group become popular. Um, and then lots of interest in, you know, running club, volleyball, um, there's a, you know, renewed interest in chess amongst our kids. Um, but one of the things that the students, uh, the kids are, are free kind of like to do is play with all the muggles. Uh, there are some educational aspects done among us and that could take us a while to figure out, but we did be able to do stuff with the muggles, which is quite surprising. Um, and we even thought about it, just be fun for the kids to be able to play some games in the morning before school and to be able to do some things that are just relaxing and and become a chance to be in school and a not instructional setting, but in the youth department. Uh, we've got some locations, so we've got, you know, the two jails, we've got cafeteria, we can use this room, we can utilize the library. Uh, we've got computer available, we have outside available. Um, we would be creating that a schedule, but again, we'd be doing it for the generous classroom and and evidence classroom and like couches room. Kind of working our way through it and then voting those those four whole parts of classroom initially, uh, to do those activities. Um, here's, our, our thought is, is that we're working for the other scheduling. We would want to, um, rather than have a stipend like we normally would for basketball or cheerleading or something like that. Uh, or we would essentially have for those, uh, staff members that are interested in supervising, we'd be doing it by patch, we'd do it by sort of summer school rate of twenty six dollars an hour. And and be able to have folks available to help supervise some of that activity. Um, we've got many activities that we weren't able to do this year. Um, that that we, that we otherwise would. So we did approve the stipends for those activities that we, that we do our hands for tie down. We have more nineteen thousand dollars in stipend money than those activities aren't happening at this point. So we've got plenty of money available that we can do these types of activities. Why should we talk to the board? Andrew, do you want to, um, follow up with this in in terms of, of kind of our ideas and, you know, how we might start through this? Yeah, next time.
Um, just with the ideal idea in large area, we tend to, we can run more than just things in the main gym. Um, and just kind of the rotation of days, so maybe it's this person told them on Monday, this on Tuesday. Uh, but just seeing like the interest and how many staff members we got that are supervised will really run on these kids that we'll be getting here. We started talking, we're going to start with the end of the eighth grade, but obviously we want to do stuff with our little guys too. Um, and I just think it's really important that we get some activity going because, you know, January, February, this month anyway, with activity inside and, um, I used to do walking club in the morning and that was huge just to get the, did your, get your base started. Um, so you guys all know I'm all about activity, so I'm excited. I really, I really want to get back here, want some oversight to be here after school because we have I O time. If I have anything to do that, I shouldn't be doing so. Um, and actually we can help out with that, uh, all of that. I think we have a lot of staff members that are very interested in wanting to get kids here to have some positive things about school. I'm just coming here, you know, being ready to play at the home, you know, so, um, but we'll be working on that needle is we can kind of end that up with, I mean, some.
So stay with me for a minute. I'm, I'm all for it. Like I said, I mean, it would, it'd be nice, it's all to keep in coordination. We were trying to keep, say, we keep protocols in place, but like I said, we have the money, we didn't spend it. It was geared towards this activity anyways, because there's going to be some activity to do, so I'm on the subject of that.
As far as supervisors, have you given any thoughts about, you know, how you're gonna handle that or anything? You know, let's use basketball for example, and I think we have the same coach for A and B for both boys and girls. They, they can get the priority to shepherd on that since they obviously missed out on the core stipend, the two stipends. So is it going to be others' calendar, maybe schedule, we're just curious on that then, or anything? Obviously, the kids part is the most important for, you know, amount of staff members.
Well, and I think we have one, you have staff members who are like, I'd like to do the basketball in the morning or whatever. And maybe we can look at, you know, having the gym, we like, we already talked about, we're going to start putting the tables up unless we do like chess or whatever. I think that, I wouldn't say that somebody's going to get the priority. I think what we will be doing now, instead of just, are you interested in what activity would you be able to, think you would like to run and then kind of go from there. Uh, we just kind of want to see it really with the kids and the parents, if it was something that anyone was interested in. And now I think that we just, you know, have the interest, then we'll be going to the staff now and say, what would you be interested in, what activity, what could you commit to morning or night, did it amount of, kind of.
Or the schedule, yeah.
And whatever problem, we message out, it'll be an hourly rate, like the summer school, that, that's the worst one, or is it stipend?
We, we were trying to figure out the fairest way to do it. Yeah, yeah. You know, if if this point be present in cohort, because the groups will be relatively small, that our thought was, was if we could find it in hourly rate, maybe that we could utilize. Uh, if, and and we could certainly be open to that number, whatever we want that number to be as well. Uh, then the stable, we have the established number for, for summer school, which we'd use for our action activities, crafts and kind of art activities and some of those types of things that manage up with that. Class and kind of art activities and some of those types of things that add up with that. So, you know, that was the idea of it.
And a question.
I like the idea of the hourly because this may lead to something in the future, even once other activities opens up. That there might be people interested, yeah, although you are in the morning, you know, that, something that's a regular, basically, that if they're paid to do, like, and all of this. You might as well just be needing that. Or reading or math, like, or whatever.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, the date of our next record of board meeting will be month eight, February twenty second at seven P M.
To go back, I did have an action line on there, you guys, do, do we know what group an hourly rate, or we want to.
See if it's actionable on that.
I saw it's actionable, but I think your recommendation.
There isn't one.
And I think. I think you can kind of, I think, I would like to buy one month, do you?
Yeah, I didn't have a recommendation only because, um, didn't know where we might go with that necessarily. Um, if we're comfortable with, with the twenty six thousand an hour, um, you can, we can have that, we can have a pace rate, and then work from there. And the issue behind it is, is that it's our summer school.
I make a motion that we approve the twenty two cell for Alder, or it's, um, an activity for, for the remainder of the school year.
I'll second it.
My second, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, five ayes motion is approved.
And John, if you could give us some details about what you're getting it organized so that we can kind of estimate. Excellent, I mean, it's obviously a huge benefit, you need to get its activity in for mental and physical health.
And then we have a big school, something that we did, so I'm not.
Right. But a twenty six dollars an hour, little.
It's seven hundred, it works out to be seven hundred and thirty hours. I probably agree, I agree with that.
Okay. Time to.
No, you guys can share that, I love that.
So, I'm, I'm super good, it's, that's, that's how we begin, we're great. They, you know, they pass by every day, it's about an hour and a half every day, I didn't go that far. You know, see how many days that would allow us? Because I just want to say that, I mean, you and Neil are setting this up, that I applaud you because I can't, I'm kind of bad about the whole heart force. I'm completely for this, but when you add on, kind of keep them in the board, I don't even want, this is a weird nightmare, so I applaud you for. So, for the moment.
We're doing try.
Okay. Um, my main motion, we adjourn? My second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.